All right, well, at this point, we have a forum. The members of the ZBA that will be voting are as follows. Tom Schubler, Buck Smith, Miles Moffett, James Murray, John Heisen. Our alternate is Patricia Andrew. And at this point, I'm going to call the, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I'm going to ask that, that the town take notice. That this is a public hearing on the application filed by John M Henderson, requesting variance from the zoning by law requirements with respect to more variances under section seven, two, seven point two, two, to permit the separate ownership of two residential house properties, which currently exist on Main Street. I want the record to reflect that I think there are, if my memory serves me correctly, sixteen of butters. And I can go through and list all of the butters, but I will represent to you that I have the attached certified, the certified mail receipts attached to our town file here, which reflects that notice of the hearing was sent to the butters on April 12th, 2021. And that this was, and due notice was provided in the first year rego on April 13th, 2021, and again, on April 20th, 2021. That being said, we're here to hear Mr. Henderson's application for variance. And at this point, I invite you, Mr. Henderson, or, or your attorney to proceed and, and outline your application.
Thank you, Tom. Bill Martin, of Martin and Olivera for Jack Henderson. As, as you know, from the submittal, what Jack is requesting are the variances necessary to place in separate ownership the, the two properties or the two buildings that he owns on Main Street. Now, those buildings both long predate the zoning by law and exist as non-conforming structures. Interestingly, under your subdivision control law and many others, where you have properties that exist in this fashion, an owner is entitled to separate the parcels without, without subdivision approval, provided that there's real access as opposed to road frontage. And that, that access is created by virtue of the easement that, that was discussed earlier. In fact, I think Jack would tell you that he thought probably when he had the surveyor create the survey and have it endorsed by the planning board, I think he thought he was at the finish line and the properties were in fact able to be in separate ownership. And not only that, but your, your assessor actually thought the same thing and began to issue separate tax bills until it was realized that somewhat thankfully, there was never a deed executed because it really is a two-step process when you're in this situation. By complete coincidence, and I, and I don't know if it's in today's Eagle, but it's in, it's in the online version of the Eagle, up in Adams, where there's a church and a parsonage that, that predate their zoning. They did the exact same thing. They allowed the separate ownership of the parsonage from the church, even though they're on the same parcel. In looking at the requirements, you know, and I do a fair amount of zoning work and it seems, it does seem odd to some extent that this has to be in the context of a variance request. There's a bunch of sort of older cases where people thought that this was a special permit application. It's really not. It has to be a variance. And really what you're doing is you're asking for a variance of the dimensional requirements. And we have a table in the application where we set forth the specific areas where there's dimensional variances requested. And it's principally the front yard of the back lot, very small variance request of the front, front yard of the front lot, which I think is about a foot or two short of the requirement. And the side yard setbacks, because the buildings aren't set back far enough from either the property line or each other. As you know, there's, there's, and it's probably very routine to you that the criteria that you have to go through to grant a variance. And I'll go through them quite quickly and certainly be glad to answer questions. Conditions unique to the property. Typically, we talk about topography, but obviously, in this case, the unique nature is the fact that there's two pre-existing buildings on the property. And that's the existence of those structures make the property unique. The lack of effect on the zoning district, I think, is, is quite simple. One of the questions sort of asked earlier was, you know, what, what difference will this make? And quite honestly, from the point of view of the use of the property, the appearance of the property or the, you know, the manner in which the property is occupied, the answer will be absolutely none. The difference occurs principally, and that's something that's important to you as a zoning board, but is important to an owner. And that is quite directly that this type of property in its current configuration can only be financed as a commercial property. And typically, that results in quite, quite higher rates, different terms, more difficult closing, et cetera. Whereas if these properties are in separate ownership, they're eligible to be financed as multifamily residential, which puts them in a completely different category in terms of financing. Not that Jack has any current intention to sell the property, but typically, when the properties are put in separate ownership, they each have a greater value so that, so the total is more than, than they were when they were singulars, which, which actually showed up in the tax bills that issued for a few years because the two tax bills were greater than the single tax bill. And that's principally because the property is more saleable. There's just more buyers who would be willing to buy one or the other as opposed to both. The hardest thing to talk about in this context, and almost the hardest thing always to talk about in variances is the concept of hardship. And I'm sure you've grappled with it in, in other settings, but it's the most infuriating phrase, I think, in, in sort of zoning, which is the, the statute talks about hardship, financial or otherwise. And then you start reading the cases and all the cases say, well, financial hardship to the owner doesn't really count. And so it's a little frustrating, but when you, when you parse through those cases, it's not that the financial ownership, the financial hardship isn't important. It's that the financial hardship has to be a result of the unique nature of the property. And that's, that's really the, the ticket here. In fact, there's this case I cited, which is the Smalley case, which really talks about variances as being an appropriate mechanism in this case. And it, and it talks about, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this subdivision rule that says you can subdivide a lot like this. And so the question presents itself, well, you know, why the heck would anyone bother to create a subdivision plan if you can't actually own it separately? And the Smalley case actually talks about, that's really a subdivision case, but it talks about the reason for that rule is that creating that subdivision plan is really a, almost a condition precedent to asking for the zoning relief. You obviously can't ask for the zoning relief until you have two parcels. But the backside of it is you can't have two parcels unless you get zoning relief. The other important requirements of the, of the variance analysis is no detriment to the public good. Obviously, again, it's a little bit redundant, but the fact that the properties will exist in their current state really unaffected suggests that there's no detriment to the public good. And again, the, the requirement that it's consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning by law. Well, you know, then you pull out your zoning by law and I've, and I've sort of gone through what you stated in section 1.3 is your purpose. And, and it's, it's almost the case that none of those criteria are even applicable. So, you know, we think that this is a, it's a, it's a fairly straightforward request. It's a little bit, it's a little bit odd in the sense that, again, a lot of people who think about this think that the fact that the subdivision control law says it's not a subdivision is the end of the story, but unfortunately, it's not. And you have to also request and obtain a variance of the dimensional setbacks. Jack, is there anything you want to add or are there any questions that anyone has?
I have, I have some questions. Just preliminarily, I want to ask Tom. Tom, are we going to have a site visit before we render a decision?
What I'd like to do is before we, we have some specific questions of the applicant and his attorney, I'm going to see if there's anybody that's listening in from the public that may have some questions or comments. My thought was that perhaps what we could try to do is schedule a site visit and then schedule a second meeting at this time, we would, we would render a decision. And while you brought it up, John, maybe we can bring it up right now before we, we, we proceed further. My hope was that we could schedule the second meeting, if you will, next Tuesday with an eye at maybe having a site inspection. And the earliest we can do a site inspection would be Friday or Saturday because we have to get $48 hours notice. And I guess before we get started, maybe I could poll everybody, including Bill Martin and Jack Henderson to see if either of those days worked for you two as well as the other members of the board.
Tom, this is.
Jack could manage the site visit.
I'm sorry. I heard something from you, Jim.
Um, the, can the site visit be scheduled prior to the continuance?
Well, I think so. Well.
I mean, just before?
You mean, you mean two hours beforehand? I, I suppose to do that. I mean, I would prefer to do it separately just because he has to digest things. Obviously, if the logistics and people's schedule preclude that, then I'm open to that. But my preference would be to set this up on a Friday or Saturday so we can spend a half hour looking at it, digest what we see, and then go in and have a meeting the following, next Tuesday. That's my, that's my preference. Now, I don't know if that works for everyone else's schedule.
What, what time of day are you thinking, Tom?
Well, I'm open. I mean, my thought would be maybe try to do it early. I could, Friday, yeah, five o'clock. Saturday, pretty much for me, I was thinking maybe in the morning, eight thirty, nine o'clock. I don't know what people's schedules are. People have to work or they have other commitments. I guess I'm, I'm open to suggestions. I guess it's a function of how available it is.
Tom, why don't you just suggest time either on Friday or Saturday and see whether that's acceptable to everybody?
How about, how about Saturday morning at nine?
That works for me, Tom. This is Miles.
Oh, as long as it's efficient, I can come at nine. I have, I have to leave about 10:15, but that should work.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. How about you, Patty?
What time was it? Nine?
Nine o'clock Saturday morning.
I can do it.
And, and John?
Yes, yes.
You're good?
Yep.
All right. Who am I missing? Obviously, Jack and, Jack Henderson and, and, and Bill Martin. Does that work for you, gentlemen?
I, I won't be able to be there, but for the site visit, I certainly think Jack can do a tour of the property.
Okay. Fair enough. All right.
I, I, I hate to tell you, but I am leaving tomorrow for my son's wedding in Kentucky. So I, I don't feel, I don't feel the necessity to be here.
I would think we might have.
Fair enough.
At the site visit, we might have some questions. I, I mean, I don't know what it would be, but I, I think it would be helpful for him, for Jack to be there.
Yeah, I mean. That's just not a possibility.
Right. No, no.
Let me ask you this, Jack. When are you back for your wedding?
I get back Monday.
Okay. What time Monday? Can we do it Monday evening? Or would that be, you'd be so jet lagged, it would be.
Monday, you know, it's the same time zone. So Monday evening would be fine.
Could we do it on Monday evening? That work for everybody?
Okay, five noon, maybe five o'clock or something like that.
Works for me. Monday, how do you all feel about that?
I'm good with it. It's okay. Fine with me.
How about you, Patty?
Next door to that, and that would be in the middle of the night for me. So it's fine for me.
So hearing no, no objections, what we'll do then is we'll have our site inspection at, at, at 39 Main Street on Monday at five o'clock. Is that what we said, Buck?
No, I thought you said Saturday.
We can't do it Saturday, Buck.
I was hearing. I thought you were, I, I'm confused. I thought you were going to do the inspection on Saturday.
We were, except that Jack is not going to be there.
Oh, he's not.
Kentucky, so we're going to try to do it on Monday at five o'clock. Does that work?
Yep.
Oh, Monday at five o'clock, as I said, nine thirty. Okay, I, I understand.
Are we all clear now? It's going to be Monday at 5:00 PM.
Very good.
With a continuation after that?
For me?
Continuation of the hearing after that?
We're going to have the hearing on Tuesday, Buck, the next day.
Okay.
At seven?
At seven. Okay, we all set on that, folks?
Yep.
Before I, I open up to questions from the board, I'm going to ask if there are any members of the public that are attending the meeting and having questions or comments. And I'm certainly open the floor to you. And if you do speak, you please let me know your name and your address, please. Well, hearing none, I think I'm going to move to the next page. And at this point, I'm going to ask the members of the board if they have any questions of either Mr. Martin or Mr. Henderson. Since I see, since I see your face, John Heisen, why don't you, why don't you start with whatever questions you know?
Okay, one, one beginning point is something that Mr. Martin said. And that is that in order for there to be separate ownership of the two different parcels, the two different lots, that you have to have a variance. I, I don't understand that. I would think that once there was this approval by the planning board, and I, again, I understand that it is not approval of a subdivision, that this is not a subdivision, technically speaking. But once there is an approval, a sign off on the plots, the different plots, why can't there be separate ownership after that?
You know, that, from my point of view, that's a, that's a great question. But there is a line of cases as long as your arm that says that it's just simply not the case, that the, that the approval of the subdivision rule does not establish the conformity with zoning. And, and in fact, we're here because I started by getting, asking your building inspector that specific question.
But, but my question is different. And that is that I understand that the signing off of the planning board does not indicate approval of the zoning. I'm not asking that question. I'm asking whether the signing of the planning board creates two lots that can be sold. Admittedly, I understand, of course, that in the absence of a variance that you seek, that the two parcels may be hard to sell because the parcels would not be in compliance with existing, existing only zoning. And any buyer of the parcels would be buying something knowing that he needs to get a variance. But can't there be separate ownership before you even get to the variance question?
Well, I mean, you, 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 you could, you could sell the property separately and create a zoning violation. No, no, no rational seller or buyer would intentionally create a zoning violation. It's just, it isn't something that would be done. And so you, you, it would be like someone coming in and saying, well, you know, you could ask for zoning relief to build this building. And, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to build a building and ask for the zoning relief later. It just, you know, yes, someone could do it, but it would be, it would be very foolhardy to do because you, if, if, if someone were to buy the property subject to the zoning violation, your building inspector could immediately issue a, an order to remove the violation, thereby taking the property down. It just would be, it would be an absolutely catastrophic thing to do.
No, I agree with you completely that that would be impractical for someone to want to buy it. But there are certainly circumstances in which developers buy land that is not, for example, zoned in the way they would like. And it's a contingent purchase that they get zoning approval. I mean, that could be done.
Well, that's true, but they don't, they don't close on property creating a zoning violation. They may buy property subject to seeking zoning relief, but I, I've never been involved in 30 years in a transaction where someone would buy property knowingly, the result of buying the property, creating a zoning violation. It's just, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a prudent thing for anyone to do.
Okay, but so clearly what is involved here, and I, I've got a couple of questions on what I think everybody admits is the issue. It's, it's the entitlement to a variance. And so let's, let's talk about that. All right. There were one of the things that you said, and it's consistent with what you say on page seven of your petition. And it, it's the first full paragraph. Hard, you described the hardship that to be sure there is financial hardship because they cannot be financed as residential property as the multiple units require the classification as a, as a commercial loan. I mean, I understand what you're saying there, but I'm concerned that if this is the basis for the hardship, that we ought to have some kind of evidence in support of what is asserted there. I mean, do, do, do we, I mean, has Mr. Henderson sought financing and been told, you can't get it, this is going to be treated as commercial? And, and I don't understand why it would be treated as commercial.
Yes, he has, and it's, and it's, it's not unique to this property. And I certainly could get a, a letter from any, any of the local banks that would say that. It's because of the number of units and the fact that there are two buildings on a common, on a common lot. You just can't, you can't classify residential loan.
But I would feel uncomfortable and uncomfortable in determining that there is a hardship along the lines of what you've described in the absence of some kind of evidence in support of it. That's.
I can certainly submit an affidavit or, or some other evidence. And certainly, Jack could testify as we speak. I mean, Jack, if you want to chime in in terms of your experience both in selling the property and in financing the property, obviously, that sort of testimony is, is, is appropriate for this type of hearing.
Okay, could I just mention a couple of other points? And I leave it to Tom to decide whether or not at this point want to get into evidence. I'm raising these points now because I'm not expecting definitive answers or decisions by the board now because we'll be reconvening in a week. And I'm doing this simply to alert both Mr. Martin and Mr. Henderson's about some concerns that I have and giving you an opportunity to either tell me I shouldn't have those concerns or to deal with them in some way. That's why I'm doing.
I, I think you can also, I mean, historically, you can see from the town's own assessment record. And, and again, if, if you're focusing on financial hardship, the fact of the matter is even the town's own assessor assessed the property as being significant, worth significantly more as when the town thought they were separate parcels than the town does now.
Okay, now, on that particular point, I think we, we understand from the language of the ordinance and the enabling legislation from the state that any hardship has to be substantial. And there is, there is case law that you actually provide us in the annotations to, I guess it's the state provisions, whatever it is, that says basically, there is not a financial hardship simply because the property could have greater value if the variance were granted. That's, you know, you're not entitled by way of, you're not entitled by way of a variance and to satisfy the hardship requirement simply by saying, gee, my property would be worth twice as much if I got the variance. That is not, that is not adequate to show the hardship.
That's true as to what those cases say, but if you look at those cases, those cases are all dealing with parcels that are completely undeveloped. And they're, and they're, and they're all situations where the applicant wants three lots instead of two, where you have road frontage that's just shy of three lots.
No, I understand that, that, that probably many of the cases are like that, but it seems to me the principle applies beyond that situation.
And, and I, and I guess on that score, I would beg to differ a bit because if you look at Smalley and the other cases that, that are related to it, they really do make a distinction between a parcel that already has two buildings on it. That's, that's, that's the key distinction.
But Smalley doesn't give you, give any support for what you're saying. Smalley, as you acknowledge, simply deals with the question as to whether something is a subdivision.
Right.
Could be approved by the planning board with, with, even though it's not a subdivision. They go on to say that it can be done, but then a variance would have to be sought. So Smalley itself does not provide support for granting a variance in this case.
It, it doesn't directly, but it also is the case that if you look at any of the pellet decisions that deal with this hardship issue, none of them are talking about existing structures. And so when you look at the language, you know, hardship, financial or otherwise, and you look at the situation where you have a property that's essentially trapped by, by just happenstance, that it happened to be in common ownership when a subdivision, when a zoning by law went into effect, you're sort of left with this situation where it's kind of the opposite of what you would, you would think should happen, which is, you know, zoning by law is sort of established to create sort of uniformity. And most zoning by laws actually prohibit two buildings on a single structure, on a single lot. So this, this effort is really intending to make the parcels really more consistent with the rest of the zoning district in that you've got a single house. The only problem is you can't move the houses.
Right, now, there is no question, but that right now, without getting any variance, that the property could be sold, right? And the, the property could be sold. And indeed, I want you to consider the, my, my question of whether to some extent, the variances that you are seeking are a product of having decided to create two lots. If you look at the number of variances that are sought, the variances are sought with respect to go beyond what the situation was in terms of non-compliance before there were two lots. Now, insofar as the property right now, before, before the separation into two lots, insofar as there was non-compliance with side yard requirements, whatever there may be, of course, that's not a problem for Mr. Henderson because it's a prior non-conforming use. But now, the variances that are being sought with, because of there being two lots, are not within a prior non-conforming use. There are variances that are related to and are a product of the separation of the property into two lots.
Well, there's, there's really only two that fit in that category. One is that the back lot has no frontage because we're really not, we're not changing the side yard deviation. We're not changing the front yard width or the front, the front lot line width. So those aren't changing. So the only two, the only two we're changing or asking for changes is zero, zero frontage for the back lot and that the lot areas be for the back lot less than 20,000 square feet.
But you're, I'm sure, familiar with the case law, and it certainly doesn't deal with the exact situation we have, which says that you cannot get a variance based upon hardship. You can get a variance if indeed you have created the problems that created problems that require a variance.
Well, and, and I understand that analysis, which, which suggests that there's literally no circumstance under which someone could, after having taken advantage of the subdivision rules to create two lots, actually use the two lots if there's existing structures.
I don't.
Could you, Bill? Subdivision by law is specific to there being two structures on a pre-existing lot. And it says that you can create two lots. But, but if the fact of the matter is that the creation of the two lots creates a dimensional issue, that means there's never a circumstance under which you can take advantage of the language in the subdivision law.
I'm, I'm not understanding that. I'm sorry.
Well, the subdivision law says that if there's two houses on a single lot, you can, you can create a plan and create two separate parcels without being in violation of subdivision control law.
Okay, but, but I, I don't understand why we're talking about subdivision control since we're all in agreement that subdivision approval was not needed.
Well, because you're saying that the hardship is created by our own action. And it's the subdivision that creates the hardship in every case. Because you're right, the parcel can exist forever in its current, in its current configuration. The, it's a non, it's a, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. It can exist forever. The only way it can exist is if advantage is taken of the change in the subdivision rules to create two separate parcels. And so what you just said a moment ago is that if you create your own hardship, by definition, you can never get a variance. Which means that if that analysis is actually true, you can never, under. Which means that if that analysis is actually true, you can never, under any circumstances, divide the lot into two under the subdivision law because you're the person who's created the violation. And there's always a violation because there's always the, the, the mere existence of two structures, um, on, on a, on a single lot is a violation.
But, but isn't it true, and to get, you know, kind of the basis of this, is that the property right now, if it were in one ownership and there had not been a division into two lots. This property that can be used, uh, because it's a prior non-conforming use and has been used over the years.
And that's.
I understand, I understand. I'm sorry?
That's absolutely the starting point, that's where we are today.
Okay, well, wait a minute, I'm confused now because right now there are two lots, are there not?
No, there's, there's an approved plan that shows two lots. But if you were to look at the deed of the property, it's really only one parcel owned by Jack.
Okay, now, that's, that's the exact, that's the present situation. And my understanding is that, uh, let me put it in kind of very everyday terms. Is that it would be more desirable from Mr. Henderson's, Henderson's point of view to have two lots. But the fact is that right now, that property has been one lot and has been used as one lot. That it can be used, continue to be used, uh, as, again, because it's a prior non-conforming use. That even though there are, uh, they're not, the various requirements are not consistent with the present zoning law, the prior non-conforming use allows the property to be used as it has been used for a number of years with a big house there.
Not, not like a hundred, I mean, that's, that's, that's always the starting point.
Right, now, and when it comes down to now is what is the substantial hardship in basically saying, uh, that the present owner can use the property, it admittedly, and it's made clear to me that, uh, it would be more valuable if it could be subdiv, or it could consist of two lots with the variances granted, I hear that, right? But you cannot say.
That in fact is the hardship. And then you run into, well, is the hard, so then you have two problems with the hardship. So there's financial hardship. So your first problem is, is the financial hardship, number one, caused by the applicant? Because if it's caused by the applicant, then it doesn't count. And what, and part of what I heard you say is the decision.
What I'm saying, the, the financial hardship was not caused by the applicant. But the need for certain variances was caused by the applicant's division of the property into two lots. And you said there are only a couple of things, right? But nonetheless, that is the need for the variance, again, has been created by the applicant.
That, that's right. And, and, and that's true. And so, and so my point to that is if, if that analysis holds true, which is commonly said, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's accurate in this context. Because if that were true, that would mean there can never be a situation where the subdivision rule has any practical import. Because yes, you could create a subdivision plan, creating two lots. But if you were to want to exercise the, the division of those lots by recording a deed, you then have to come and ask for a variance. By that analysis, since you're the one who decided to create the subdivision plan, you're creating the hardship, and therefore there's no scenario under which you could ever be entitled to a variance. And I'm saying that's not what the case law says, and I don't think that's what Smalley says. Smalley is saying that in that narrow context, that is not an act that, that precludes the applicant from relying on the financial hardship. The other side of that is, is the financial hardship, uh, where does the financial hardship come from? And the cases that are talking about financial hardship in that context are really making a distinction between is the financial hardship a function of the nature of the property, or is it the function of something else?
Okay, but, but.
And we're saying function of the property because of the two, the two buildings.
Yeah, I, I just want to make a final point, and I apologize because I've been taking up a lot of time here. But again, I want to share this with you because I think it, it, it's to your advantage and it's certainly to my advantage to have you think about these in advance of our next meeting. My, my final point is this. That it seems to me that the property as it presently exists, if it were just one ownership, right? It is property that has been used and can be used and has value. That, uh, I understand that this is a tough time for anybody in real estate because of the pandemic. And that the property that, uh, as it exists with two units on it and the property being used, as I think your petition describes, where there are three units in the main building and then two units in the back building, all right? That the, uh, they're, they're not being used terribly financially successfully right now. That's, uh, I, I mean, I don't know whether that's an accurate statement or not. The sort of my, my main point is. My, my main point is this, that the property right now has value without the variances. That it would have more value if it's divided into two lots and the variances are granted. And to me, that simply is a desire to have the property have more value than it has right now. And there are plenty of cases that say that a variance can't be granted simply on the basis, it is not financial hardship. That your property would be more valuable if had the variances.
I, I think, again, I think that that's true. If you're talking about an undeveloped property where someone is coming in and asking for variances to build new structures that would otherwise violate the zoning bylaw, you're going from something that doesn't exist to something that does exist. This is a completely different scenario where you have an owner who just by, by virtue of the timing that the zoning bylaw was adopted, has been trapped in, in a situation that the owner doesn't want to be trapped in. And you can say, you know, some owners take advantage of the fact that there's a prior non-conforming, um, uh, status for that property. And yes, this property that's existed as two single-family homes on, on a single lot has existed for a hundred years, and it probably could exist for the next hundred years. Uh, but by the same token, there's no practical consequence of allowing them to be in separate ownership. And, and quite honestly, one of the, one of the sort of the hallmarks of, um, variances, variances are very tough, they are. And, and, and quite frankly, um, if you look at zoning appeals, zoning appeals of special permits are hardly ever successful. Zoning appeals of variances are almost always successful. So it's true that the variance is a very high standard. And I think that, you know, I come back to where I started, which is, um, the fact that you, that the subdivision law says that these can be two separate parcels. Um, by virtue of the fact that there are two structures there when the zoning bylaw went into effect, leads a lot of people to think that that's the end of the analysis, that, oh yeah, that makes sense. If someone had two parcels that is, two buildings that existed when the zoning bylaw went into effect, and they want to own them separately, they should be allowed to do that. And that's what the subdivision rule says. You are then in this very odd scenario, admittedly. I mean, it's very strange to me that as a matter of just legal analysis, that you aren't, that you, that this doesn't fit in the category of a special permit. Because it does seem as though it would make more sense there in terms of what the criteria would be. But no, we're in the criteria of variance, that's absolutely clear by the case law. But the, but the, but the last part of that, um, gives me some relief in the sense that the variance being requested is not the same type of variance as a variance is being requested to permit new construction. And the cases, if you read the cases carefully, you can see that distinction. Um, and I, you know, I take the point in terms of degree of financial hardship. I mean, you know, yes, it's supposed to be substantial hardship. And so the question really becomes, you know, is a $10,000 delta in value substantial? Is a, you know, one or two-point interest rate differential substantial? You know, I would say most people who are looking to refinance their homes would agree that a 1% uh, interest rate would, 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 would suggest that you go to bank A versus bank B. And so, yeah, 1% interest, interest rate, uh, difference doesn't sound like a big percentage, but I think that's substantial and certainly is the case of, of what commercial versus residential rates would be. Um, and it's not, I mean, it's, it's, it's completely, it's completely clear cut because um, you can have a residential one to four family, you cannot have a five family and above, it just puts you in a different class.
All right, at this point, I'd like to see if, uh, any, any other members of the board have any questions to the applicant or, or Mr. Martin, Miles?
Yeah, I do. Um, I have a couple of questions. The, the, the package is very long, there are a lot of, um, exhibits included in the package. Um, I think, Bill, you said there's a, there's a plan that shows how the property would be divided, and is that something relevant to our decision today?
Um, only relevant in the sense that it shows where the, uh, where the dividing line is and what the setbacks of the new parcel would, uh, you know, really are by virtue of the subdivision plan.
Now, that's in what, that's in, uh, which figure?
Let's see.
Because it's related, I, I have a follow-up question, I, I think I see, I think it's on.
Exhibit two, exhibit two.
And there's actually a screenshot of it on page two.
Exhibit two.
Okay, so exhibit two, if everyone looks at that, shows where the, what the potential, uh, property line would be between two properties we're talking about, right, so we should call them?
Right, yeah, right.
And, um, I, I guess the, the existing easement for the driveway that goes over the Butters property. Um, does that stay? Is this, is this relevant or not to this? I don't know, does, but does that, does that stay with the back lot, or is that an easement that goes, that conveys for the front lot?
That easement is for the benefit of the back lot, it allows the driveway, if you look at this, the driveway comes in and there's a structure back there, a barn or shed or whatever it is. And the driveway for, you know, however long, looped around it onto the Austin Riggs property. And when this, and I, it probably was the case that no one even realized that because the driveway long predated the plan. When the plan was done, the plan describes it as apparent encroachment. Um, because at that point, it was clear that the driveway existed on the Austin Riggs property. After the plan was completed in 2014, um, you know, Jack, uh, was able to secure the, the, the easement from Austin Riggs for ingress and egress.
And does that, and that would, that would be related to the new back lot, right?
Yeah, that's the access for the back lot. So the, so the owner of the back lot, excuse me, would have, um, would ultimately have to have another easement, there, there's an easement over the Austin Riggs property. But, um, if Jack were to convey the back lot, because remember, we haven't done a deed yet. You would have to include, um, an easement over the front driveway. You obviously don't give an easement to yourself, so there's no easement that exists yet over the front driveway.
So it'd be two easements to, um, that the back lot would have to have, one with the, uh, budding property and one with the former piece of the property, lot one now. Okay.
Right, so you'd have, so, so the, so, whoever that is would be granted.
Right, so that's not, that's not part of a variance of any, as long as there's a easement that's in existence and legal, that's not part of any variance request?
I don't think so, no. The, the, the variance is really requesting the dimensional, uh, to make the dimensional issues conforming.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Buck?
Uh, well, you covered, I had, one question was, you just answered about the easement over the front. But it, that would, um, you would, an easement would be required if separate ownership of, of those two parcels uh, ever came to be.
But you, you, you don't, there's never a scenario, the estates would merge, you can't really grant an easement to yourself.
Well, um, well, you couldn't sell the back lot separate from the front lot without an easement, so it would.
Right, right, but, but you couldn't, when you own a single piece of property, um, you've got to have a grantor and a grantee. So until there's an owner or a potential owner of a back lot, you wouldn't create an easement.
And that's, and a sale would be contingent upon that happening, I would assume, would be part of that transaction.
For, for certain.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, honestly, that, that's not technically a zoning issue, that's a title issue.
Right, 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 and I'm just, I'm just pointing that out. Um, it seems to me that, uh, that the, everything is pre-existing in the sense of all the side lots and the frontage, everything is, is pre-existing. So I, I'm not particularly concerned about those issues. Um, I, it seems to me if there's an issue at all, it really uh, has to do with the concept of the hardship of, of requiring, having just one owner versus the possibility of having a, a second owner. We're talking about hardship quite a bit here, but we were talking about financial hardship. I think there's a hardship potential for an owner of a property, this is a complex property. Um, and so if I were the owner of that property, I would feel a hardship of what do I do with this property? I mean, you, you know, by requesting these changes, you're basically trying to get over a hardship and have more flexibility in utilization of, of the property as it, in, it's, I think it's fairly obvious that eventually those would become two parcels, or, I mean, I, I would certainly assume that. So that's a sort of a, I'm looking at this in more practical term, the hardship part, more practicality of what an owner of that property can or can't do. Um, the financial obviously is there too, but, um, um, I just, I, I can see an owner taking that attitude that, you know, it's a tough, tough problem just to, depending on the, the requirements of, or what you wanted to do with that property.
Thank you, Buck. Patty, do you have any questions of the applicant or Attorney Martin?
I do, um, so I was just noticing uh, the property cards that you, um, gave to us are, they seem to be old property cards because I pulled one that is only the main house, the yellow house. And it has a different, uh, assessment value, et cetera. Um, just to let, no, and I did not, I was not able to pull a property card, so it must be the old one that you were speaking of, Attorney Olivera?
Uh, it's Attorney Martin, um, that's okay. Um, and I can talk about a little bit of the history of this, but there, there, there was a time um, shortly after the plan was recorded, but no deed recorded, that the assessor actually created two separate cards. And I may have actually included both sets in the, in the attachments here. And then, and then more recently, um, they eliminated the back lot card and came back to a single card, um, for, for really the front lot. Um, and, you know, again, it's the whole issue here of how confusing it is that when you recorded this plan, everyone thought that there were two lots. It's pretty obvious by the fact that the town thought there were two lots.
And they corrected it, yeah.
And then, and then they, and then, um, and then they corrected it when they realized that there was no deed that went along with the recorded plan. And, and, you know, I'd love to talk a little bit about the assessment values.
But, Ken, I'd just like to say one thing, I corrected it, the town didn't correct it. I corrected it.
Um, Jack, what was the, um, the assessment difference, do you remember?
It's.
I don't, I don't know, but it was like, uh, in, in taxes, it was like 30% more taxes to have it subdivided than, which is why, which is why when I was told it wasn't legal, I said, well, I'm not going to continue to pay 30% more in taxes for something that isn't legal. So I went back to the land court and withdrew the subdivision plan and put the original plan back in place. And that's when the town adjusted the tax card.
That was a number of years ago too, right? I, I'm just asking.
Seventeen.
Yeah, because.
Or eighteen or something like that, I, yeah.
Yeah, it's a 14,000 some odd dollar difference, 14,200 dollar difference between these property cards and, and the current one.
Jim, do you, uh, do you have any other?
Well, just, uh, a couple of quick questions. I, as far as, uh, I've got a very small, uh, copy of the, I, uh, the plot and the, the buildings. Is the, uh, straight line that goes, I, uh, perpendicular to the sidelines, straight across, is that the new property line for the subdivision?
Now, if you look at the front building, there's the front building, and then there's kind of a dotted, which is a fence that attaches to the garage building that's adjacent to the easement where it says apparent easement.
Right.
Then there's a straight line that, that crosses the property.
Okay.
That, that's the single line that creates the subdivision plan.
Okay, and, and.
On the one line.
Ju- just to point out is that I've actually relocated that fence line across the property line to create the two different lots. Um, when, when I thought this was a legal subdivision. And so when you get here, I do have a new, or I do have an updated plan survey showing the fencing.
Or I do have an updated plan survey showing the fencing. All on the main house side of that property line.
Well, that answered my second question also, which was, what is that? I heavy dotted line and. That's the fence line?
Yes.
Okay. No, I think I I think. There's, you know, a fair amount here to digest and I think it's been very helpful. I going through this with the the attorney and Jack. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, one of the things that you mentioned in your in your application on page six. And one of the criteria that we have to look at is conditions unique to the property. And it seems that the argument here is that the property here is unique because these two structures were built before zoning regulations.
I think that's right, I mean.
Is that the now, is that the line of analysis that you're implying here to develop the the. Address the criteria about conditions unique to the property?
I am, and it's and it's just by happenstance that the, you know, the date that the zoning bylaw went into effect and the fact that the structures existed. And it just captured, it just it just froze it in time.
And and I I would add. That the grandfather clause is null and void. If you don't accept this. It's the 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 fact of the matter is, and John, I understand your concerns. But the concerns of the zoning board are for new construction and new development and making sure that things stay. In conformance with what the town has decided is their their planning. Growth and and what they want to have happen. This changes absolutely nothing on the ground. The buildings will will stay the same. The only thing that will happen is that there will be the opportunity for two separate ownerships. So it doesn't change the anything. On the ground whatsoever.
You know, I understand that and there are five requirements which Mr. Martin treats very clearly in the petition. And I think as the four of them, you're in good shape, all right, for the reasons you just stated. But the substantial hard question is still there and I have the concerns that I've expressed.
And anyway, back to my question, one of the things I noted in the in your application is. And I'm curious, you make the the argument that, you know, often when you have a circumstance where you have. Property, you you essentially have somebody who wants to divide the property where there's where there are no structures. And I understand that argument. I guess my question to you and probably more for you, Bill, is are there any cases that you could you could identify or locate where veronice was. Granted to permit separate ownership of two nonconforming buildings on a single lot by creating two lots. I understand what you told me about the fact that most of the time you run into circumstances where somebody is seeking to develop and erect. A structure on a property that doesn't exist. My question is, are there any cases that you can cite where. Where we have a circumstance such as the one that this board faced with Mr. Henderson's application?
So I looked, I looked long and hard and could not find a single case. That deals with that issue and I kind of scratched my head as to why, and then I actually saw on Facebook today. That the town of Adams did exactly what we're talking about, which, you know, and I didn't have, I I wasn't able to get their. Their decision or the or the paperwork on it. But it is the exact same scenario where you had two nonconforming buildings, one being a church, the other one being the parsonage. That that the town has allowed to be separated so that they could be sold in separate ownership for for probably fairly obvious reasons. And and I think, you know, I quite, I I really think that there aren't cases because it's. I don't think it ought to be that controversial because it seems like. It's the it's the yin and the yang of the zoning of the subdivision rule. If you have a subdivision rule that says as a town and not every town has that particular bylaw section, it's it's optional. That says that if you've got pre two preexisting buildings, you can create a. A a plan that divides them into two lots without creating a subdivision issue. That the corollary of that really ought to be, you ought to be able to own those two lots separately. And the hoop that you have to go through is a is a variance and. You know, I think we all know as a practical matter, maybe not as a pure legal matter, but as a practical matter. Variance is almost always, in my experience. Win or lose largely on the. On the voice of the neighbors, if there's strong opposition, I I've never won a variance over strong neighborhood opposition. And while I have not gotten every variance I've ever requested. You're sure as heck a lot better off if you if you have neighbors who are either neutral or supportive, and I know Jack's actually talked to a couple of the neighbors. And, you know, at best or at worst neutral and at best positive, so. You know, we don't think we're creating a situation where there's any real controversy here.
Yeah, I understand that, and I guess my point is simply that we don't have any cases that are on all fours with the issue we're presenting. And if I understand your analysis correctly, and I'll sue you correctly if I'm wrong. It seems to me, at least, and this is just my own cursory opinion, that I think you're stretching the small A case. To stand for a lot more than I think the the small A case stands for. I mean, to me, I read the small A cases, basically, you've got this subdivision regulation. That basically requires planning boards to give some an endorsement to separate some lots. But it's also pretty clear on the small A case that that 81p endorsement doesn't give the lots any standing under. Under the zoning code and doesn't preclude. The the operation or enforcement of the zoning law that are in place. I guess my problem here and one of the things I look at is when I see some, I see a series of zoning laws that have been placed here. By whatever reason, back in 1972, 1974, there's subsequent amendments, there's a reason for that. And I I'm a little uncomfortable candidly trying to stretch the small A case for a proposition, say, hey, this is inconsistent. We really should be paying more attention to the fact that they're allowing for this this whole subdivision thing and that's something. That, you know, I I'm going to read the small A case again, but off the top of my head, I I do have some real issues with that.
Well, I mean, Smalley specifically says, what's the point in, what's the point in creating the plan? And Smalley then goes on to say, in 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 quote, it may be preliminary to the attempt to obtain a variance. Which means that you can't attain a variance until you have the plan and and obviously the creation of the plan by that. Frame is not something that that precludes you from asking for variance, it's. It's a condition proceeding to asking for the variance, you create the plan, then you have to go ask for a variance and by asking for a variance. You have to meet the criteria, admittedly, the hardest one to persuade a board on is the issue of hardship and I don't think. That it's the nature of the hardship that ought to that that ought to create the 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 most difficulty. I, you know, and I think that the comment that it's more the degree of hardship. That sort of creates the, you know, creates the reflection on on whether they're granted or not. And I and I think that that degree of hardship, you know. Should and ought to be balanced against the nature of any opposition or practical impact of granting it, so. If you have some degree of hardship and no opposition, it's far more likely that it it makes sense to grant the variance than if you have. Some degree of hardship and a bunch of opposition because you can say, well, the hardship doesn't outweigh. The detriment to the to the neighbors, well, if the neighbors aren't reflecting any detriment whatsoever, then. The degree of hardship may not need need to be as extensive as as it would otherwise, that's the point I mean.
Well, does anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, I would like.
I do, Tom.
Okay.
This is Miles and Phil, this might be just a, I brought this up to Tom. When I first saw this, on the conclusion on page nine. It says in the middle of the paragraph, it says granting the variances requested will have physical impact on the currently existing structures.
We need to know. No, there's no, there's a missing no. No impact on the currently existing structures.
Could that be modified for us to, you know, to weigh to weigh on this, make a decision, I'd I'd feel. You know, it should be edited.
Yeah, I'll send your.
Okay, thank you.
Well, at this point, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and I'm very, and we will schedule. The the second hearing, which will be next Tuesday at seven o'clock, which would be May 11th at seven. We will also be conducting a site inspection at five o'clock on Monday. Which is May 10th, if my math is correct.
Tom, I I is next Tuesday, the 11th? Okay, I have a conflict that I, at this point, I cannot change. So either I, we can have Patty sit in, I in my place. Or I, which I have no problem with, but I. I just looked at my my calendar and realized. That I will not be available that evening.
Well, I guess my feeling and my concern is that we do have to have a decision. Issued by June 1st and we're unable to do it the following Tuesday because it's election day, I was informed. So I guess my inclination, Jim, would be to probably proceed and have Patty sit in your stead for the second hearing. May 11th.
I'm I'm very comfortable with that.
So I hope we're still talking to each other after this, Jim, but. For that reason, and we do have the concern of making certain that we issue a decision within the.
I I I think that deadline is waivable on our part, so I'll leave it to Jack, but I, you know. I I know, I don't see that as a hardened test deadline, so.
Yeah, the only comment I would say is. Is is if you had the continuation, follow the site visit that night and do it. That night, it might be easier for everybody involved.
That's an idea. How does that work for everybody?
That's this Monday, the 10th?
That would be Monday, the 10th, Bill, at seven.
I think that works for me.
How does that work for for Miles, Buck and Jim and Patty?
Fine with me.
Yeah, that's okay, or I mean, would it make sense to do it earlier at six, I mean, you know. But that just, either way.
Well, the thing is, by the time we got to get back, we got to figure out how to get on the Zoom, Buck.
That could take an hour.
I think I'd want to have it at seven. What we'll do then is we will have the second meeting on Monday. May 10th at seven o'clock with the site inspection, Monday, May 10th at five o'clock. I will speak to Teresa, our town coordinator on this and she will be sending you, I think. A new Zoom link or maybe we'll be using the same link, we'll make sure that everybody knows about that.
Can I ask sort of the evidentiary level you want in terms of the financial hardship, I mean, obviously, Jack can talk about it, which is sort of typical in zoning matters. I can reduce his observations to an affidavit or I can get some third party documentation as well, I'm just not sure what level of. Documentation or testimony you're looking for on that issue.
Well, Bill, since this is an issue that's been raised by John, I'm going to defer to John Heisler, what 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 would you be, what would you be looking for, John?
Well, first, and here's where Mr. Martin and your experience in the ZBA and Richmond, I believe it is. I don't believe that the rules of evidence apply with great strictness to ZBA hearings. And therefore, what might be considered hearsay in a court, we could perhaps accept. Now, I don't know what that means in this context, but it may be that Mr. Henderson.
Right, and that and that's what I was driving at, I mean, I think it may be helpful if we just took a couple of minutes to have Jack talk about. His experience both in terms of seeking financing and historically thinking about selling the property. And 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 what that meant financially and then, you know, if you want me to follow up with some, you know, rate shoots or whatever from the banks. Obviously, the rules of evidence don't apply. And hearsay doesn't apply and even affidavits don't apply, I mean, people who who talk in hearings are never. Put under oath. So, you know, I'm just curious as to the level of of detail you want on that issue.
Okay, I I think that we're in agreement here, I think Mr. Henderson probably could do it. Just keep in mind that for me at least, I have limited. Experience in dealing with financing, I bought a house, all right, that kind of thing. But I do not, I have never had had to deal with a property like this and try to get financing, so. Keep that in mind.
I I think probably.
If it helps, I mean, it might be as a letter or an email from one of the local. Commercial banker sort of explaining the process of this type of property versus. Four family residential and what, you know, what products it would qualify for, I mean, I think that's probably what would be of interest to you. And and that will that will result in, you know, a commercial rate is X and a residential rate is Y and, you know, over 30 years, the difference is such and such. That's kind of what I'm envisioning you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
This is Rachel Kenny, this is Jack's neighbor at 41 Main Street, thank you, gentlemen, for a wonderful evening. I've gotten through more mail than you can imagine.
We're very happy for you, in any event, we'll we will see you on Monday at five o'clock at 39 Main Street. With the meeting on Monday at seven o'clock.
Seven, thank you, everyone.